I would like to call and order the special call meeting of city council. It's now seven o'clock. This time I'd like to ask everybody to please stand and pray. This time I'd like to ask for some room. Here.
Here.
Joiner.
Here.
T.J. Walker. Dottrich. Harris. Javaris Walker.
Call this next to you.
Council member T.J. Walker. Dottrich. Harris. Javaris Walker.
I don't even have a quorum. I am going to adjourn the meeting, however, I know that a lot of people have come here to speak. They've got things on their minds that they want to present. And so after the meeting, we're out on the mic and we're going to listen to anything that you have to say.
Yeah.
So with that said, I am going to adjourn the meeting.
I have a question for you.
You can now, Mr. Sir.
Question is, I think the public deserve why the meeting was canceled. Even we, the three of us, do not know why a regularly, duly scheduled council meeting has been canceled. And of course, our attorney from last, he's been here at least forty years, it never happened. That doesn't happen in the history of Rocky Mountain. And I just want to know that some of us were not contacted, was not polled on this meeting being canceled, this city council meeting being canceled. And so I did talk to one council member of the government medical appointment. But he did not give the city manager the authority to cancel this meeting. So therefore, to my knowledge, it was not a majority that gave the city manager the right to send an email notifying the city attorney to cancel this meeting. So we want to know why, if you know, why this meeting was canceled.
No, sir, I don't know why. The meeting hasn't been adjourned. So at this point, what I'm doing is I'm turning over Councilman Blackwell to our organization. I'm more than happy to answer any questions that you have.
Well, I just want to say that's a problem if the mayor don't know how to mean this is canceled. And if three other council members don't know why the meeting is being canceled.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Manager, would you like to respond to what you know about?
Don't get out! Don't get out!
Thank you, guys. So what I would like, what I would like to ask are rules of engagement tonight, okay? So, Mr. Manager is not answering, okay? Thank you.
Can we say, can we say what we need to say?
Just, just one thing.
Call official meeting.
I'd like to ask everybody, keep, keep, keep the energy, keep the energy. Let's see you. Mr. Rogers, do you want to comment on what you know about the reason for cancellation tonight? Would you like to comment about that?
Thank you, Councilman Blackwell. I'll say a few comments and then I'll have to leave as well.
Okay, but Mr. Manager.
So in terms of rationale, I don't know why, I just know that we do not have a quorum.
Okay, so you were informed that we would not be?
I was informed that we will not, we will not have a quorum this evening. So I know there were a number of correspondence that I wasn't included on. Unless, we have no quorum tonight, I was informed that we would not have a quorum to have the meeting. And so, that's all the information I had.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Manager. Would you like to stay or do you want to?
Oh, no, he says to leave.
He wants to stay, I'll adjourn, let me say. Okay, so the manager and his team have left.
Let him go! Right, let him go!
So what is gonna happen is this is the people's house.
Right.
This is the people's house. So we're going to have an opportunity tonight to talk about what we do know. We'll have an opportunity tonight to state what's on your mind. And the three of us who can also give perspective about where we stand. The reason we have, or had, or tempted to have, a special call meeting of city council was because a few days ago, we received an email from the city clerk, who was called by the city attorney, who was called by the city manager, who was informed that there would not be a meeting tonight. There were no explanations given. I sent a reply back and asked what is the reason? There was no reply for almost an hour. When we looked at the city charter, the city charter clearly states that the city council is to meet every second Monday from, at seven o'clock, and every fourth Monday at four P.M. Normally, if anything has to change or shift about why there'll be a meeting or what the agenda will be on the meeting, there is normally, regardless of who sits in a seat, there's normally a conversation that takes place among the city council. We will talk, we will email, but normally, everyone is notified simultaneously if there's something going on. I've been on the city council since two thousand. I've been part of a minority, I've been part of a majority, and I'm part of a minority again, and it's okay, it's politics. It's up to the people who sit here. Period, it's up to the people who sit here. But I have never experienced a regularly scheduled meeting of the city council being canceled without any explanation. After I wrote my comments, I started receiving emails from, first, Councilman Mayor Potem Walker said he was unavailable and could not attend. Councilman Javaris Walker said he was unavailable, I actually had a conversation with him. I knew he has a medical appointment. And then Councilman Harris sent the email back and said that he had to be out of town and could not attend. And Councilman Dottrich sent an email and said he was unable to attend. Elections are tomorrow, so I know, I know four, at least two of them are here. Got to be, I can't imagine being out of town if you know you got a big election next day. So I'm a little mystified about that. There have been times in our history when we are unable to have every member of the council here. And you saying that happens again. And we had council meetings with four people, with five people. And we just keep doing the business. But I've never seen a meeting scheduled, canceled, unless we were all out of town like in Electric Cities Conference, which we normally are in August, or it's December and the second meeting falls at Christmas time. So I can't explain why we're not having a meeting. But that being explained, what I will say is this, is that we're here tonight because we plan to discuss and will continue to discuss compensation for city workers. It starts, it starts with sanitation, but it's for all city workers. So I'm gonna ask Councilman Knight if he would give us a little overview of the process because some people either haven't been here, or where they've been, they've not been interested in city dealings until they have particular interests that they want to see moved forward. But we've been talking about city pay and environment for public works employees, and for the least of these, for twenty-three years. I have been, Knight walked in the door twenty years ago. Richard walked in the door a few years ago, and we picked it up and it never stopped. Councilman Knight, give us a mystery.
Yes, I'd like to thank everyone for, number one, attended the rally and received this special call meeting before it was adjourned from our man, mayor. I do want to say that, before I give you the history, in the charter, section thirty-four, it talks about a quorum, votes, and attendance. And I had this conversation with our city attorney, that he can correct me if I'm wrong. But it's section, section thirty-four, quorum, votes, attendance of city council members. A, quorum attendance, a majority of the members elected to city council shall constitute a forum to do business, but a less number may adjourn from time to time and compel, the word is compel, the attendance of absent members by ordering them to be taken into custody.
Come on now. Come on now.
We don't want to do this tonight, we discussed this among the three of us. But if this continues to happen, we have the authority through our city attorney, through a court order, to compel council members to come to a city council to do city business.
Right now.
Am I right?
Yes, it's, actually, if you look back on what the charter says, it would not think to take a court order to compel the missing members to come.
Right, so I just want to say, keep missing meetings. You will be compelled to come and face the people. You can talk the talk, but you got to walk the walk. And this given the history, and I just, I thank God for Dr. Walker being here. And the history started when I was probably about two years old, well, ten years old. I was born sixty-eight. Reverend Walker talked about amnesia at our last council meeting. The historical amnesia and the more amnesia go hand in hand when it comes to Rocky Mountain and our treatment of workers, black citizens, and the least of those. The fight for justice and fair treatment of sanitation worker goes back to nineteen seventy-eight. Councilmember Blackwell and I was part of the previous council who have fought against the institution of amnesia that leaves our garbage men and city employees forgotten. Three years ago, we rejected a plan from Galvanger Consulting that didn't address the needs of sanitation workers and other workers who were not being compensated. Two years ago, the city manager came back with a proposal from the Evergreen Consulting. It left the sanitation out in the cold too. We don't need more time to study, we need to do the right thing. We, the three of us, since Councilman Bajon has been fighting for equitable pay and fighting for city workers. And I can remember when we had a situation where managers would order new trucks and take the air conditioning out of the trucks so the public work employees could not, on those hot days, when you get the warning on your TV and your phone and your radio, be aware of a hundred and one, two degrees, that they could go in their trucks to cool off. They said they need to go under the shade tree. We stopped that. When the water and sewage, wastewater plant, treatment plant, where they had employees going into these huge silo pipes to clean out, those pipes with feces in it, they had to wear layers of clothes, cover their heads, and put newspapers in their car because they didn't have showers to take a shower. They had to go home and take that home and change, or leave their clothes outside on the porch, and their family would have to witness that. But that was changed. We've been fighting for workers' rights and equitable pay a very long time. And that's why we're here today. We stand with our city workers, our sanitation department. We had asked, I think Ruben is gonna read this a little later, or Councilman Bajon, asked that our city manager who led this meeting, he's the one that asked for a seventy-five thousand dollar increase with less experience than any other city manager that we had hired, to my knowledge, that managed a city of about two thousand people with just thirty employees and a volunteer fire department. But we agreed because we wanted unity. Never again.
I told you, I should have did it that time.
I just want to say that two council members, one who led the charge to take this council back from all the progressive movement that we brought into this city. At one point, we had only two African-Americans department here in this city. Now it mirrors the population of this city. We fought for wages for everyone, but two of the council members, one is Lash Dottrich, who always talked about transparency, transparency, and secrecy. Where is he today? Where is the transparency? Councilmember Harris always said, "I'm a new council member, I'm learning." But you learn mighty quick, because you have amnesia of what you said about transparency. So I just want to speak truth to power and let the citizens know what is taking place in the city of Rocky Mountain.
Certainly, we concur. We recognize that this council meeting tonight is critically important because of the conversations that we've been having. And to council, this city council meeting would be to silence your voices that we need to hear. So we thought it would be critically important that whether a majority or whoever, that it was important tonight for us to open our doors so our citizen voices can be heard. Not only heard, but embraced. So we're here tonight because we want to say to you, your voices, your critical voices are important. It is important to the decisions that we will make. It is important to the leadership of this city. No matter what you have to say or how long you have to say it, we're gonna be here to hear it. And not only hearing it, but we will respond to it. So we heard about it, we said that no matter what, we want you to know that this council doors will be open for you tonight. I want to thank our attorney Jeff for being here, our clerk Kim for being here, everybody for being here. And I want to say to you, you are important. You do matter, and your voices are critical to the sustainability of our city. So thank you for being here, look forward to hearing you, and look forward to hearing you every city council meeting. And even when I see you in the community, I thank you for your voices. And don't ever let nobody take your voice.
Right, that's right.
Thank you so much. Prior to the meeting beginning and being adjourned, y'all do know we're not in the city council meeting, right?
Right.
In the city council chambers, but this is our meeting, this is the people's meeting.
That's right, that's right.
So I have a list of names of people who had signed up to speak. I can call that out, or you can just come up. We don't necessarily have a three-minute time limit, but I know we don't want to be here all night. Just have a great rally, so I do ask that you just be aware that other people have something to say too, and then we can move forward. And there is a document I will read a little later in reference to a question that Councilman Bajon sent out to the city council. I'll read the manager's response, and then we're gonna ask more questions. What I do want you all to understand is that this is an ongoing conversation. Paying compensation is complicated, but just because something is complicated doesn't mean it can't be talked about. We're complicated, we're intelligent people, aren't we?
That's right.
We're very intelligent.
That's right.
And that's why we have multiple councils, multiple people who have different perspectives to hear. And tonight, we want to hear what you have to say as well. Thank y'all, open floor Reverend Walker. We appreciate you coming tonight, thank you for your comments.
Thank you very much, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
To members of the council who have cared enough to carry on for people today, let's give them a hand. I'm thankful for the wife standing with me tonight. And as I, as I stand here, I stand here as a pastor who has, as a next month, we have pastored in church in this city for fifty-four years. And, and I continue to have their support. And whatever I say tonight, it was certainly endorsed by the Ebenezer Baptist Church and located on Rutherford. I stand here to say to you tonight that there's emphasis in repetition. We stop saying sometimes what we say because we're not confident in the content of it, in the historical relevance of it. So some of what I say tonight may be a little bit repetitious. I stand here tonight in support of sanitation workers largely because of my historical involvement with them and having seen the difference that they've made, and are making far beyond that role, the day that rode. I'm reminded of our nineteen sixty-eight struggle. And one thing that have continued to cross my mind that it was at that point that we saw the significant positive change in the entire city, especially the involvement of our employees and employers. It was a transition from bitter for some, but as we look back on it, after the struggle of sixty-eight, Rockin Mountain had never been the same. I said in the same breath, however, that's what make this day something that's important. Who would have thought, who would have thought that council, that we struggled so hard to change and to get people on that we felt would be more sensitive to the needs of majority folk in this town? Who would have thought that we would have to go through the changes in terms of the logistics of this meeting center? Because some people, including my grandson, by the way, chose not to come. Now, I emphasize that because I want to make it straight, make it clear, very clear. Blood is thicker than water.
That's right, that's right.
And I am supportive of my grandson. And the reason why I am supportive, because as I said in the rally outside, that some, somebody has, it's like an old scripture that we read, that said the poison in the pot. Somebody slipped something in him that involved the children.
Come on now.
But I, I am very, and I want him, though, I'm very supportive of him, and I'm hoping that he can come to the reality from the T.J. Walker of truth and how we raised him. If you're gonna stand for what is right, you can't always have all the resources and the, and they say, they're well-say of the people wishing you well and all. You have to, you have to make a saying. And that's why I'm so proud that he is a member of this city council. But let me just say, I'm trying not to be too, too long. The thing that has been really living in my mind is that the employees in particular, in particular, leadership in particular, need to understand that, that the positive change that have come in this city has come primarily because of the work of the sanitation workers. The city was standing on their shoulders, that's when it changed. It was, it was a bad judgment, and I hate to keep revisiting history, with the bad judgment of people disrespecting the least of these that caused the drama of sixty-eight. I said earlier how much I miss the warriors of Solid Day. I said earlier, I must have missed the warriors of Solid Day and Sister Laverne Green and Lois Turner. But these people had, and there were others, had in their hearts that we're gonna stand on the side of right. And I'm glad that I look back at this audience today because look, standing right beside me, that there are still folk who believe in doing right. Because if I'm right, God will fight my battle. And so people can stay away from city council meetings. And it's so courageous that you had this hearing tonight that we're calling that for us. Because I've been, as Ruben said earlier, he been in the minority.
That's right.
I've been, in fifty-four years, I've been here where I didn't even feel safe walking in a city council.
Come on now.
And a lot of changes have taken. Good changes. And we don't need to go back. Especially when it's over the livelihood of our workers.
That's right.
Sanitation workers. And as I attended the sanitation meetings, they make sure that we don't forget to say, "All workers." The city can't be nothing but better off if we would consider those people who labor every day that make our city be working. Let me state this now, I can get hung, but I'm telling you something that most of you didn't know. And I take pride in this. Well, we got our new city manager. I'm not involved, I very much involve the old city manager. I love her very much. But that's another story for nothing. But when the new city manager kind of came in, I had never had a conversation with him. Had never laid eyes on him. And I asked my grandson, I said, "Look, get a meeting with city manager and myself." And he did it. He called it. And we met at my office. What could have been, perhaps should have been maybe a thirty-minute meeting, ended up being a one hour and a half meeting. And the subject was sanitation workers. That was the subject, and the only subject. Reason why that was a subject because I didn't want him to come into a situation where he didn't know the whole story.
That's right.
I've got a friend, I'll shout Bishop Jordan Bell. He said, "You see my glory, but you don't know my story." I wanted him to know stories. And one hour and a half, and the only subject, and then no proposals, ain't come out of nowhere, and take some of y'all out of contest base. We're getting to y'all for that meeting. The subject was, "Look, give those sanitation workers at least a fifteen percent raise." And I know that they are not the hard-hat workers. I said that nobody would argue with you for going to the lowest and working way up this tall. For one hour and a half, I talked to the city manager, and I was convinced that he would leave that meeting and try to do something to make it happen. And he did. Well, a lot of things I said, but I'm closing by just saying this. We can't go wrong for standing with the least of these. I know of the raise for our police officers, and I think they serve in fact. But you shouldn't have to hold the least of these down in order for you feel that you justify them. Because the least of these have carried the burden of all of our history. And I won't get into all of that. But I fully support our sanitation workers. And if somebody's comparing them to other cities and this, that, and the other, well, let's just do right, do the right thing, and stand with the least of these. People that we can see in a tangible way what they mean to us. You shouldn't have ever been there than sixty-eight. Ain't go through all the struggle that we went through and cry all the tears that we cried. They're harder to make this decision.
Thank you so much for allowing me to.
Thank you, Reverend Walker. We didn't want to rush the bishop of the city. So we thank you. Thank you, Reverend Walker. We appreciate your words and thank you for the city.
To these brave councilmen that have decided to go forth with this meeting, thank you. Let me first of all say thank you for that. I would have been remiss to allow my seat to contain me tonight, not to come behind a man I respect, that is the person of Dr. Thomas Hill Walker. I respect him. I've met with him. I've talked with him. But my name is Everett Silver Senior. I'm running for City Council War Four. And this is the second time I've seen our incumbent miss a civic duty, which means it is the business of the citizens. And guys, I tell you this. If we don't look at the significance of the matter, that even I see a name that says Mayor Portim under the same name, to see a meeting that folks walk out on us. I'm gonna get to the sanitation workers in a moment, but this is appalling to me that people will walk out concerning our matters. And so tomorrow is election day. And may I say, you would be a fool not to vote for change. Tomorrow will speak for itself, but tonight speaks for the moment. And this moment to see our first word that we honor these for, how can you honor them you walk out? I look forward to sitting beside you. I look forward to working with you, to do my civic duty, because the last time he was sitting across from me at the polling place on the phone. Well, again, guys, if we don't look at, as we come to this city council meeting, to ask you to respect the dignity of labor, which you can't have economic growth without these men or sanitation workers who doesn't have all of their supplies to even do their job in totality, what they come up against. Yeah, tomorrow is election day. But you better look at and listen at this moment. This says a lot to us. We are a city that's supposed to be in the city hall, and this is how we represent ourselves as leaders. We've got to now do more than what we say we're gonna do. So I stand in solidarity with our sanitation workers. I support them. I have met with them. But I will tell you this. Unless we speak to change and unless we give our voices that we've been given, I can tell that by the way you vote tomorrow and see who can sit in the seat and be reminded of their civic duty. This is Everett Silver Senior, and I approve this message.
I come to you this evening, I remember. And I want you to do the math. I remember my father, when we moved here in nineteen seventy-four, minimum wage was two dollars and ninety-five cents a day. And I remember the day, we were excited. We moved in a Happy Hill community. And I remember the day my daddy came down that street, coming from Thomas Street, coming around the loop off of House Street with that green barrel trash can, pulling it to each and every backyard. I remember. I remember the hot days. There were no air conditioner in the truck. There was no water keg on the truck. We used to meet our daddy, me and my sister, at the back door with a glass of lemonade. It was hot. I remember as it got cold, my daddy's feet began to hurt. And I remember me and my sister getting down on the floor, rubbing my daddy's feet in some icy ice because his feet hurt and trying to make a living off of two dollars and ninety-five cents. I remember. I remember. I remember the times that my daddy would come home and he would be tired from pulling trash for me and my sister and my mom to have something. I remember. And I take half of these men. It has, I know has progressed from two thousand and ninety-five cents to now. I know it has. But he was depressed and he, as a man, when you cannot make a living, as a man,
Come on now.
when you cannot make a living for your family, it does something to you.
All right now.
It, 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 it. I remember my father, he got so down there that he went back to New Jersey to stay there and leave us here so he could do better
Come on now.
for us. But it took some coercing by this woman, named Emma Wilkins, to convince him to come back and divvy it out for us at the minimum wage that he was doing and pulling that trash thing. This is nineteen seventy-four. In the heat of the day, in the cold of the day. I remember the men used to stand on the back of the trash truck in a raincoat. I remember when it was cold, they would climb inside that trash truck. It wasn't heating in. I remember that body heat kept them warm. There wasn't no heat in there. I remember those days. I remember. And if it was not for him paving the way for the men today, where would they be?
Come on now.
Would it still be that hot trash truck pulling it? Pulling that trash truck, pulling that thing behind your house, dumping that trash can. And it might have been two or three of them at the moment. But all of them could fit in there. Sometimes he would have to go back twice because sometimes it would be more trash than he could get in that trash in that green toilet thing. I remember those days. And he made better. He went to another job. But I have been in nursing homes since nineteen eighty-one. And I have watched the city men come in from health problems, for working in the cold, for work feet, legs, body. I have been there. I have taken care of city workers that their health declined because of the working in the cold, the pulling in the trash truck. It has been a struggle. I have taken care of those men that came behind my father. And if you're right, do right. Be right. And grandma used to say, "Act right." When you're working on, act right. Try to be right about what we doing here. And we can't do it all, but we gotta try to do this thing together. We can't do it grinding, pushing people's face in the dirt, trying to be better than anybody else. We've all been there. We all got some skeletons in our closets. But it ain't about tearing nobody down. We need to try to build each other up. And that in Rocky Mountain, I have not seen. I have seen us tear at each other instead of building each other up. You know, regardless, if you do right by me, I don't care if you brown, blue, purple, green, yellow. Long as you do right by me. That's all that matters. You do right by me. I'm telling you, I have been to Mr. Blackwell's. I'm colored. I have been to his, getting out the book bag.
That's right.
I have. Let's do right. Just do right.
Everybody who you are, so we can.
I'm going to sit down.
Tell us who you are. Tell us who you are. Come on.
I'm Regina Towns. I am the daughter of John Wilkins. They call him Pete. He used to work for the city of Rocky Mountain. And I have eaten from the city of Rocky Mountain when it was on Main Street. Our rent was seven dollars a month. Do you remember those days? On Happy Hall Street. On Happy Hall Street. I light bill used to run a sixty-five dollars a month. I remember those days. I remember going to pay the city bill for my mom, going into the city of Rocky Mountain, my mom. I remember those days. Pulling that green trash truck, that green trash cart, making the way for me and my sister and my mom. I'm telling you, just be right. Do right. Trying to stick together and not be at each other.
Thank you, Sister Regina. Thank you so much.
May Day. May Day. It's May Day. It's an emergency right now that we gotta address. We got people that don't wanna fess up. They don't wanna stay and stick to the word that, you know, they made for themselves. So I'm calling May Day. Consequently, May Day is the event that was held in the eighties with the sledgelot workers that were the first demonstration, the first major demonstration of victory for the city workers in the city. Reverend Walker during that time made a statement, and he said, "It's important that we are here today to struggle." That's what he said back then. And today, the same thing applies. It's important that we are here today to struggle. We see who's here with us in the struggle, and that's important to know as well. You know, during this time right now, we're standing together trying to, well, not trying anymore. We passed the asking, demanding a raise for the sanitation workers. You know, we're gonna have to be honest with each other and be honest with the people about what's going on. This is not a mistake. We know it. This is not a mistake. This never been done in history. And the people that's walking out tonight, that work for the city, we saw that too. But it's not just because they don't stand with us. We don't. We didn't talk to every person. It's because they're scared. It's because they're worried about their livelihood. They're worried about their jobs. And when you can't speak up and say how you feel and you have to leave, that means we're under tyranny. This is oppression. This is a public forum, and everybody has a voice. We said, "For what city workers?" "For all city workers." That's what we're here today for, not just the sanitation workers. So we made note of it, and we see who's here. But let's not confuse some people's, some of our people's absence with not support. It's fear. And the way we fight fear, fear means false evidence appears real. It's not real. It's faith. The way we fight it is by standing together and being honest and stepping up to it. Now, the speaker before me talked about health statistics. She talked about her personal story with her family. I'm gonna share the statistics that was done in the study in the nineteen eighties with the sledgelot workers right here in Rocky Mountain, their health disparities according to an article that was just published this week. Right here in Rocky Mountain. Their health disparities according to an article that was just published this week. By Dr. John Lou Dillahun, uh, Holloway at NC State University along with some of his colleagues. On this, uh, the workers' justice, uh, movement. This is post, uh, Chicago, um, dot EU journals. You can go check the journal. But according to their, their statistics, sixty-four percent of the workers reported frequent headaches. While, while at work. Thirty-nine percent of the workers reported dizziness. Five percent reported visual changes. Forty-five percent reported upper respiratory irritation on the job. Thirty percent reported throat irritation. Twenty-eight percent had sinus problems. Thirty-two percent described developing shortness of breath. Do y'all recognize some of these symptoms? So, you know, we don't know. We haven't called for a health study, but we might. This was in the nineteen eighty-eight, uh, this was in the nineteen eighty-eight study done with the sledgelot workers, uh, that was tying, uh, this article is tying environmental justice to the, to the movement. And we gotta understand that this is all connected. It all is, it all matters now. So where are the people that's our age, that's my age? Where are you at? Cause we need your support too. You're the ones that gotta apply for the jobs, the vacancies. We got money for it. It's plenty of vacancies. We gotta make up our minds that we wanna do it. And, and we gotta do that with four votes. We are appalled by the decision. Of this, of the current council. The NAACP is appalled by the decision of the current council. And we, and we do not support. Uh, a, a body that's elected by the people that won't support the decision of the people. So we know what work we gotta do. But I'm close, I'm close to say, um. You know, we're, we're not gonna stop. We'll be back every, every meeting if we got to. Uh, but, cause we, we gotta stand up for something, right? We gotta be here. So, uh, thank y'all for convening a special session. And, um, I was, we very disappointed to see the actions of our city manager tonight.
My name is Richard Pedway. I'm the president of U C one fifth. I'm part of Black Workers for Justice. And I come to, to let my voice be heard. First of all, it is unbelievable to me. That a mayor. That wanna run for mayor again. That won't even sit and listen to the people that he don't be mayor. It's appalling to me to see the city, coming to city council that is not here. That afraid to fake their city people. But yet they still stand out in line and say, vote for me. I, I go back a long ways with the city. But Andre Knight. And Ruben Blackwell. We also did a study on the pay scale. And we came up with, uh, I asked them right here in the city council, can y'all explain to me? What is a minimum? What is a mine? And what is a, uh, mice? No one could tell me. But yet they still didn't wanna tell me that they can give somebody else money but can't give the other people money. It's amazing to me when you got people, our city manager. Who coming from another city. Giving seventy-five thousand dollars more in his bank just by acting. But can't turn around and say, city worker, here's what you got. It's amazing to me how we can sit here today and sit in this city meeting where it's supposed to be a city council meeting. Where people just walk out because they want to walk out. And not give an explanation of why. It's amazing to me how we sit here and say we are all equal. But yet still you can't stand to hear my voice. We, I stand here today to let you know that it's not possible at this time. This is two thousand twenty, twenty-three. And we got people acting like they're still children. That city manager acting like a child, like a child. City mayor acting like a child, but yet he, yet he still, he wanting to be called mayor. As long as you want his name, we could give you your name and you could stay at home anyway. Because a city ma, a city mayor supposed to do more than that. He supposed to govern the people, our city. City manager can't even stay in here, but yet he still get a seventy-five thousand dollar raise. But he want to say he's a manager. Manager who? Is he managing his children? Or he managing just, just managing? Or just sitting in the office collecting the seventy-five thousand dollars? We are thick and tired of people trying to run over us and tell us we are not equal to them just because they lickin' our sounds. We been walked on, trampled on. We been stepped on, we been chewed out. We been done beat. And all the way that the city's workers do and asking for is a twen, almost just about a twenty-five percent raise. That's with the six percent quota and the, uh, fifteen percent. If we, if you can't come up with a decent answer to tell me why you walk out. Then my vote tell me that I can't tell you what I'm gonna vote for. And I'm tired of it. I'm tired of it. You gotta give, you, at least you can show us some common courtesy and decency to stand and listen. We know that this means it's just a meme. Because we ain't got the people here to hear it. But we gotta voice, we gotta speak out. We gotta let our voice be heard, even though it's just a few. But I'm gonna let y'all know that it ain't just a few. That the whole city you're walking out on. You walking out on the whole city. And I'm gonna let y'all know this now. We gonna come back next, next. We, we got the next, we got the next, we got the next, and we got the next till we get an answer. We are tired of playing, tired of playing with this. When you can, you can give raises to a part of the people in the city and tell the rest of the part they don't work, they, they not there. City workers that been working with the city during the COVID time. Didn't get a bonus. Didn't get a raise. But yet they still, you saying they don't deserve nothing. Just give it to somebody else. It is time to quit playing with people's mind and game really, cause it ain't this time. It's two, I gotta say, it's twenty twenty-three. It ain't been time to quit playing. We quit playing a long time ago. I'm seventy-three years old. And I worked with the city. I worked with the city in the fleet maintenance department for over twenty-seven years. And I never got a decent raise. When I left the city, I was only looking eighteen or nineteen dollars an hour. Because of my fortitude and because of what I did, because of my father, being who he was. I went to the military. I ain't had to worry about coming in, getting out here, but I went to the military and I did get my degree. From Shaw University. Good afternoon. Good afternoon. I won't be long, but I will be strong. This is the most disrespectful city council meeting I've ever been to. I'm Willie Brown. Uh, you ain't one fifty during city coun, during, during city working. This is the most disrespectful.
It was.
I've ever been to. But I want you to never disrespect the police. I'm gonna tell you why. You want raises for all city workers. They in this fight with you too. They suffering, but they still got a job to do. I ain't gonna call nobody out, but don't do that no more. Don't do that ever again. Because they working just like we working. They got a job to do. Their job is to protect and serve, and that's what they gotta do. And I'm just putting that out there for us now. Cause that ain't what we here for. With all respect, don't ever do that again. Now, I won't lie. I ain't never seen nothing like that from a mayor. Or a city manager in my life. Did you see his face on the way out? Like it was a. Let's think about y'all. Let's think about y'all. You see his face? That wasn't even professional. That was, that wasn't even, that wasn't even a professional courtesy to the people he serving.
That face like that early. That face like that early.
No, I can't believe that. But I will report to the nation. You ain't one fifty. You know what I'm saying? I will be calling on some of my brothers and sisters in the union to help y'all with whatever you need. I will be calling on them for them to build y'all to go fuck with me, because I'm gonna tell you how this gonna work. You might not know it right now. But I'm finna tell you how this gonna work. I'm gonna play the blueprint out for you. They don't even wanna see what's happening. They don't even wanna see this, man. Ask them. Take a look for them. Ask them. Y'all need to get on your phones tonight and call your constituents, their constituents, everybody, and say, look, this is what happened. There's no way Rocky Mountain, the size of it is, everybody shouldn't know what happened tomorrow morning. I ain't trying to be funny. Y'all don't need to not even go to sleep. Everybody know who and what to vote for. I was born in the seventies, man. I grew up in racism. I'm gonna shout a little louder. I'm in the Klan with Virgil Griffin, the Grand Dragon of the Ku Klux Klan. I used to rocks in his trailer. What? I'm in the crime here, didn't. Being to shoot his butt shots through the woods at us. I know what it looked like when I seen it tonight. It scared the, it scared me. I almost reverted back to being my own self. But I was so shocked that to despise, how you was looking like you was despised. And no common decency to sit here and face you. I ain't trying to be funny, but that's what it looks like to me. And I'm gonna report what I saw. And all these cameras and videos gonna see it, cause I'm gonna say it. That's disrespectful. And I want you to understand racism can take a blackface too.
Oh yeah.
It's called institutional racism. It can take on a blackface too. What somebody get to doing that, to bid for somebody else. You ever seen Jane though? You see Stephen? We got them too. I, I mean, I'm gonna, I'm gonna be short. But I don't want you to miss this. Do your job now. They don't do theirs. Get up your hind parts, get your fingers down and do the walking like whatever they used to say on television, whatever. Do your job now. Let your fingers do the walking and mouth do the talking. Do your job now. They can't do everything for you. They done sacrificed their whole life and careers for y'all. Now stop y'all to do something. Get out and vote. Get on the phone, call your people. Talk to whoever you need to talk to, because we're not level of disrespect. That right there is not acceptable, not professional. That, that run your city. If it keep running your city, you ought to be ashamed.
Thank you, Brother Brown. Good afternoon, everyone. Uh, my name is Christopher Edwards and I am a resident of Rocky Mountain, North Carolina. And I hope everyone's in good health and high spirits tonight. I'm writing and speaking to express my gratitude for the unwavering support. And commitment that the city council has shown toward the well-being of the sanitation worker. Especially those that are here tonight. Um, as the gentleman spoke before me. You know, witnessing the mayor just adjourn the meeting and the city manager just walk out. Um, I had to question myself and ask myself, was I really in the city council? Or was I in a third world dictatorship country? You know, it's a shame that we vote for these people. And we have to consider and deal with the level of disrespect that they have provided us tonight. By not even allowing our voices to be heard on civil matters. And it's very frustrating that as we go into an election and you want to earn our votes. And secure our votes. And have our support, but you don't reciprocate that same towards your own city constituents. So for those that are here tonight. Um, there's a popular hip-hop group called Public Enemy. And one of their title songs is called Fight for Power.
Clay Turner, uh, seven oh six East Grand Avenue. Folks, uh, I'm mad too. I'm glad I'm not the only one. I've been mad like shaking mad. All day. And I remember at the last council meeting, and I'm gonna turn around a little bit and help y'all, because this is our house now. So, here's the thing.
They're not recording. They're, they gone. I see them away.
Don't reply. We are no longer at the end of meeting because we have all these empty seats. Okay? And I remember Councilman Knight at the last meeting said he wept. Wept before the meeting. And I didn't, I didn't cry at all today, but like I said, I've been mad all day. And that's okay. It's all right for us to be mad. Even Jesus succumbed. To righteous anger on some patients. So this anger is good for us. And we should know who we should be directing it at. And, and we're right, it's not any of these folks here. It's all these folks who aren't here. And I was glad to hear Reverend Walker both before at the rally. And up here. He's a hero of mine and a reason that I moved to Rocky Mountain. Five years ago. And I respect him when he says that his son.
Grandson.
Grandson, thank you. I respect you. When you say, sir, that your, your grandson was raised right. His heart is in the right place. And I believe. That when it comes down to it. His heart may come around to the right place. But we're here today. And he's not. And at some point, all these folks on the city council who aren't here, and I'm just gonna name what's going on. Conspire together to cancel this meeting.
That's right.
And we know what needs to be canceled, they need to be canceled.
Come on now.
So. Live dog tricks. And anybody who's willing to be a two-for-a-nickel political jackal. They gotta go. Let's do that tomorrow.
Good evening, good evening. I'm speaking on behalf of Environmental Service and my, my coworkers. Some of them had things to do. My name is Andre Jones. That's, that's me. Y'all know me familiar. I sit at Rocky Mountain. Should know me, but you're gonna know me. Reverend, Reverend Walker. I appreciate him speaking out. Coming out and supporting us. He's a, he's a fighter. He's gonna keep on fighting. For what's right. I appreciate Andre Knight. Ruben Blackwell, I appreciate Reverend Jones as well. For being here. But that shows you who in support of us. That care, that cares for us. I come here, I, I don't walk out on anybody. I'm here every time. Speak up here and be diligent and be well respected and received. That's what I wanted to see tonight. Be well received. But walking out, smirk on your face. This ain't game. We not playing game. We play every night. You understand? We got our families to feed. And like you said, like the, the sister coming here, her father worked all day. Feet hurting. But he had pride when he did his job. Wanted to quit, wanted to give up. We never gave up. I'm not giving up. I love the city. I love the people in the city. I see people every day, speak with them, talk with them, walk with them. Sometimes they, sometimes I, you know, you, you. Sometimes they'll, sometimes I'll, you know, you, you look, do your job and hurry around. Sometimes the little old lady sits there eighty years old, she might be the only person you can talk to all day long. But you take time. Don't you call, don't you call up being a good worker, being a good citizen, being a child of God. Do your job diligently. But tonight, it's a travesty to me. Disrespectful to me. To see things going on, like you said, with Richard Pedway, say in two thousand twenty-three, it's crazy. And like Brother Ron said, a third world country, a dictatorship, that's what it seems like tonight. We can't come together. We don't need the four bucks. We been wanting, ain't been that for what, a couple of years? And we got around to it. Last time it was forty-one, I mean, one to four, couldn't get, couldn't get nothing going. Couldn't even get a six percent cost of living increase across the board, not just for us, across the board, the city, all the way. I love my firefighters and I love my police officers, Governor Nita, and the committee. But you also need sanitation workers to keep the streets clean, to clean up crime, to clean up crime. You understand? You dig that? You get down and do it.
I'm right now.
I'm gonna speak on that. Let, let, let that marinate in your mind. Like I said, we, we in the city council now, speak freely.
That's right.
But I met some good, I met some good people here, some good citizens, like Ms. H. Chief of God sent to me. Huh? Sends me something every day, a scripture. I enjoy that as well as other councilmen and councilmembers. That, that, that uplifts me every day, uplifts me every day. You know, some days you wanna get up, you don't feel good. Body aching, gotta get out in the cold, sometimes the heat of the day. Uh, but we do this. We do this because we love doing it. We love doing, I did due diligence for the city. Uh, without us, and if we do stop things from going on, it's not only hurting us, but it's hurting the city as well. You know, but I'm glad to see the city behind us. You know what I'm saying? I want to be in front of us sometime. But we gotta, we, as our department, we gotta stand up. And I'm, I'm challenging my coworkers. I'm challenging them. Stop, stop feeling like you're intimidated. Feel like you're gonna be retaliated against. Because Brother Knight said, "We not gonna tolerate that in any city council meeting." You can, it's here, you can speak freely, freely, and say what's on your mind. But a lot of them are scared. A lot of them scared that they gonna lose this or lose that. Because someday they're gonna glue to their family. Sometimes it's the only income I'm coming in from family.
That's right.
You know? I don't know their personal business or personal life, but you may have some people work with the city, live in a motel, hotel. Can't afford to live. I gotta pay this light bill to feed John Susan James. But it's hard. Sometimes they don't eat because they gotta feed their kids. They go lack. But that's just been a good parent and, and been a leader of your household. When they look up to a man, a man leaves by example. They come on this him, he tired, he gotta put a smile on his face. Huh? He gotta put the kids to sleep. He gotta hear about that day, even though stuff on his mind that he wants somebody in him. You know? But I'm not gonna be long about it, long-winded about it, but I'm glad to see that y'all are here. And I hope my folks being here tonight as well as that lot else. And I appreciate all of that. Thank you.
Good evening. Ruben, Richard, Kim, Andre, and Richard. Thank you all for your diligence and sticking with us. You know, this is not an easy thing. I know it's not easy for you and it's not easy for me as a citizen in Rocky Mountain. And if I would made him, I would have at least stayed in here to hear what the people had to say. And if he can't give me a valid, one-sentence reason why the meeting is, it could have said it was a holiday. And I could have almost, you know, thought, well, yeah, it's a holiday, you know, why not a holiday? But he didn't even say it was a holiday. I mean, he, he looked baffled. He know why you're not meeting. See what I mean? And so things like this happen to expose people for who they really are. It didn't have to be this way. All we were coming to hear was the, the response that, um, Councilman Johnson asked the city manager to do a little research to let us know the impact of the motion of the recommendation of Councilman Andre Knight on giving the city employees an increase. And I, I'm here to hear that information. And I wanna know why I'm not getting my report tonight.
Uh, we have it to read. I was gonna read it. I was gonna ask the manager to respond to everyone.
Yes.
And I told him I was gonna ask him.
Yes.
And he definitely said he did not want to talk about that.
It's not what he wants.
I'm just saying, I'm just saying, I was trying, I didn't read it earlier because I was trying to give him the respect of giving his answers himself. And since he's not here, we will read the answers that he gave and then we have more questions.
And I asked him to stay. I begged him to stay. He could stay for me. That should have. So I feel some kind of way right about now. But God bless you all for all that you're doing right now, because this is from your heart. You know, and nobody being y'all to sit up here past eight o'clock. And I'm tired and I'm hungry. And I appreciate you. And everybody, another round of applause. You are my heroes. You know, it's what we see, and everything you can't see, but some things you can see. And we see you all here, staying here, sticking by us. And I really appreciate you. Thank you. I didn't say my name, though. Mrs. O'Ree. I live in Edgecombe County. Thank you.
Councilman Blackwell, I'm gonna stand right here. Um, I just wanna say that I asked Andre to go see what they video on the meeting because since he took everybody else, I didn't want them to be able to look at the city page. So if they look at it, they gonna have to come to my page. That's what I want them to do. So if they look at it, they gonna have to look at it on my page. And I'm not getting paid. And they never gotten paid come here to go to those meetings. Okay, um, what I want to say, um, the Telegram. I used to write a lot of letters to the Telegram. Folks thought I worked for the Telegram. Now, the Telegram has hid a lot of history. Everything that went on, I did a timeline, especially with all that stuff with Rochelle Tony. I did a timeline, put all the links up there. What did the Telegram do? They wiped it all off. All of it's gone. So the history here in Rocky Mountain, a lot of it is gone. But see, I just did the links. I couldn't keep all that stuff. So it's gone. A lot of history is gone. And when, uh, Cooper talked about, how you doing, Ms., uh, Adrian, since you looking at my mom? I know you got something to talk about tomorrow. But, um, talking about Sledge Lock. I work at Honeywell Aerospace Company, right down the street from Sledge Lock. And a lot of those folk used to work at Sledge Lock. Now, I don't know how many of them that have died on my job worked there, and I'm gonna check that out tomorrow. But a lot of people that work at Honeywell came from Sledge Lock. And we have had quite a few people, I've been there thirty-six years, we had quite a few people that have died. And I was wondering, was it something out there that at our job? But come to think about it, I need to check that out. But I have, I am a life, life fully paid member of the NAACP. I remember Black Workers for Justice. I was a member of that with Taladine. Because what I did was I said I wanted to be a voice for the voiceless, the elderly, and the young. A lot of people go to the NAACP when they got a issue. I didn't have an issue. I had to seek them. I had to find out where, where the local branch was. And like I said, I, I was a member of Black Workers for Justice because I wanted to be that voice. Like I said earlier, I ain't never wanted for nothing. Matter of fact, my daddy gonna get me. He, he'll be nine in February. And then when I gonna call him, he called me, he called me a while ago. I had to call my son in Greenville, send him to call my dad and tell him I'm gonna meet. Would you know if it'll be there tonight? And plus, my wife home waiting on me because I gotta take her somewhere when I get home. But it'll be late. I don't care what time it is, because I'm gonna be here to stand with these city workers. Because I've been on Rocky Mountain since six thirty this morning. And I ain't going home till the job is done. And I'll be back over here five o'clock in tomorrow. But I want to appreciate you all and, and also I don't know whether Ms., uh, O'Ree covered it or not. But I want to thank, um, Ms. Bass for also staying because I'm quite sure she might didn't have to stay since it's not a city council meeting and the attorney either. But me and the attorney go way back. We joke all the time because we, we been here longer than anybody. And he said, "Well, man, good to see you." Because I had stayed away for a little while. But, uh, he like, he my attorney because me and him go way back. But I wanna put it because I'm waiting to hear the study. But I did wanna get that out about Sledge Lock and the video because I want them to come to my page. They couldn't have the glory of, of, or we can leave and we can see what they said. They might see what they said, what y'all said, but they gonna have to come to my page. Thank you. And thank you, Andre, for stopping.
Hi, I'm Adeline, First Vice Chair for the Democratic Party. First and foremost, thank you for actually hearing the, the people. Thanks, Reverend Walker, for always hearing the people. Thanks to community staff for making sure that the people always have a way of knowing what is going on in the community. And let's be real, there's no doubt that the mayor is watching right now. He has an election tomorrow. And it's funny because I think back to when he was elected as mayor. Instead of being mayor, he decided that he wanted to be a congressman. And every time I see his name, I think about that cheesy commercial that he ran. You know, that's S R for Sandy Robinson, make sure you voted right. And judging on his actions tonight, voting it right shouldn't be too hard tomorrow. Because when you say you represent the people and you're the head of an entire council, you should at least have the dignity to stay around and hear what it is that the people have to say. More so, tonight was the first time I've ever seen the city manager. This is my first meeting, first time in this chamber. And a lot of that is because of the word everyone fears. And we've heard city workers talk about it over and over, retaliation. I knew that coming here, you get a target. And that fear is very real. My mother, she's on social security, but she's part of a grant program to have her house fixed. She's been waiting two years to have it fixed, and the program goes through the city of Rocky Mountain. So while I've been watching from the sidelines and behind the scenes, you know, I've had to constantly ask the question, do I stand up and do what's right? Or do I stay silent and protect my family? Because this isn't only about me, just like with the city workers, it's not just about them. It's about their families. But at some point, you have to say enough is enough. You have to stand up and be heard. And with my mother, her father, he was illiterate. But he always told me this story about when he was growing up and he was a sanitation worker. He told me how in the winter, on the back of the truck, you froze. And in the summer, you just didn't wanna be back there because, well, it's the summer and you're on a trash truck. He told me about the time that he'd be picking up a trash can and rats would run up his pant leg. You know, these are things that you don't really think about when you're just throwing your trash in the trash can. So one day I asked him, I'm like, you know, you, you tell me all these bad things about it. You know, why didn't you keep going? You know, what made you go back? And he said, "Well, it's not always what you want to do. It's what's right." So that's why I decided to come here tonight, just because it's what's right. We've heard over and over, we've heard from individuals from Durham, we've heard from individuals from Raleigh, Rocky Mountain, Edgecombe County, all surrounding areas. The right thing to do is to give these, to give these pay raises. We've also heard some say that we have to stop with talking about essential workers. And let's be honest, after what we saw during the pandemic, every worker is essential. Nothing happened without those workers making it happen while we were able to sit home and be safe. It's also funny because as we talk about all workers, I have to go back to Mayor Robinson.
Sandy Close.
Well, you know, he doesn't, it's not very giving, so I can't call him that.
It, it been good to some folk.
But I have to go back and I think about it. I think about when the Black Lives Matter movement happened. He was one of the first to say all lives matter. But now that it's all workers matter, it's a different conversation. So, once again, as I look at all these empty seats and all these people who in private talk about they represent the will of the people, I have to ask the question, do you represent the people? Or do you represent your own pockets? The people in this room, you're loud, but you're right. But if you look around, you see a lot of people that have been fighting for a long time. And you can only fight for so long before you get tired of fighting. And that's what some people are counting on. That's why I'm proud of people like Cooper Blackwell and Sidney Meeks and so many others who's taken up the fight. Because the reality is, is it's time to pass the baton. And we have to have people to step up and take it. And friend or not, the fact is, is that we have walkers on both ends of this podium. And both were supposed to be that baton. But here we are. Questions have to be answered, but it's clear after what we've seen tonight that the answers are with the three. The solution is, where do we find the one to make it four? Tomorrow, we have that opportunity. And looking around, there's people here that clearly want the job. So if that's the case, be the voice tomorrow that they didn't want to hear tonight. And let's fill the seat so that the next meeting is not empty.
Hi, everyone. Um, for those that weren't at the rally, my name is Sidney Meeks, uh, Political Action Chair of the NAACP Rocky Mountain Ranch. Um, and so I respect my elders. I've talked about that outside. And I respect the love that Reverend Walker has for his grandson. Um, but while I was recording live on Facebook, TJ Walker joined the live. And the election is tomorrow. And as we are sitting in this room, the people that we voted in office, and I'm saying we as a collective, voted in office, decided not to take the time to be in the room, to look us in the face and answer our questions, yet you can join your live from wherever you are, my live from wherever you are. And I wanna explain, this is a clear sign of voter manipulation. Let me explain what I mean when I say that. When you can spend your dollars to send mail to my mailbox to ask for me to vote for you, but you cannot sit in your seat when a concern has come up about city workers and the pay that they are receiving, that is voter manipulation. Because when you were asking me to take my time out to vote for you, but yet you can't take your time out to have enough decency and respect to sit in the seat that you asked for. I didn't ask you to run. I didn't ask you to sign, and let me, before I say that, we talked about outside that this is a political issue. And I'm gonna argue that to the, to the point because all issues are political. We see what's happening in our state legislature. We see what was happening in other, um, states within our country like Tennessee. So everything is political.
That's right.
And we have to be okay with that.
Exactly.
Because that is the country that we live in.
That's right. That's right.
But when we have people that decided to run for office, but don't wanna, but don't wanna be about politics, I don't understand.
That's right. Can't take politics.
You decided to go to the Board of Elections office, fill out paperwork, and sign your name on a dotted line saying, "I want to be a city council person." Well, that is an elected position.
Come on now.
And that makes you a politician.
That's right. Better educate.
So in order for you to want to be in one of these seats, you're gonna have to come here and face the people. You may not agree with it, but you signed up for this.
That's right.
You signed up to sit in these seats. And I know they're watching, cause one of them is watching a lot. Or if, if you're not watching now, you're gonna pop in later.
Oh, they're gonna.
So I'm gonna speak to you directly. Troy Davis.
Come on now.
Brockton Williams.
Come on now.
TJ Walker, why are you not here? Tara Pittman.
Come on now.
Why are you not here?
What I'm talking about.
We have elected, uh, candidates here that are not even in office, and they're in the room. Why are you not here? It's no excuse. You asked for the seat.
You asked for it.
You signed up for this. The minute you went to the Board of Elections office, you signed up for this. And the fact that you are not here is not only voter manipulation, but it's downright disrespectful.
Yes.
That's right. Come on now.
And the fact that you have the nerve to disrespect, disrespect me, anyone that knows me, I don't take disrespect lightly. I don't. My parents taught me to advocate for myself. I advocate for myself. I've been in college when they didn't want me to graduate. I advocate myself after the job, and I'm gonna advocate for, not only for myself, but for other people.
Alright now.
I come from a, a family of advocates, of activists. Not just in North Carolina, but in Illinois. That's where I'm originally from. And the fact that you have disrespected the audacity of you. The audacity of you to still want to ask people tomorrow to vote for you, and you couldn't show up here today. I'm scared you, I'm scared. People are taking their time out. There are parents in this room that probably have kids that they need to feed. They taking the time out to be in the room, to hear what the pay study is. Or what the, what the, the information is, excuse me if I'm out of turn. They taking the time out to be here, and you couldn't do it, but you signed your name on the dotted line. I'm not an elected official.
Come on now. Me neither.
None of us in this home are, except for the people up there. So do your job.
Do your job.
Or you're gonna get fired. Because they're behind you. When we vote, we hire them. You reminded of that tomorrow when you go to the forums. You're a hairball. So when they don't fulfill their job, and they don't fulfill their, their duties by sitting in these seats, and addressing you, and facing you, and concerning your issues, and not answering emails, and not answering calls, and not showing up for forums, but they want your vote, remember that.
Good evening. My name is Joyce Lloyd, and, uh, we've heard a lot tonight. Amen. And, but I looked to Jesus. And he told me to pray. Because prayer changes things. We can do a lot of talking, but we gotta talk to Jesus. Because he changed people's mind. And he touched this folks' heart. Hallelujah. Excuse me in here. Precious Father, in the name of Jesus, we stand tonight to say thank you. For all the things that people have said, oh God, we ask you to move in the heart of man. We ask you to touch now, in the name of Jesus. Lord, we ask you to heal the hurt, God. We ask you to bind the broken heart. Lord, somebody got so much in them, they don't know what to do. But look on us tonight, God. We are your people, God, and we are waiting, God. We thank God for those that are out working on, for our man behalf. God, we thank God for our city workers. So God, we thank God for the littlest to the largest. And God, all of them deserve what they deserve. But some deserve even more, but they're yet getting, not doing anything. But God, I ask you to touch tonight, I ask you, oh though the baby listener, the daughter has said. God, I ask you to just move on them tonight. God, touch their heart, their mind, God. And we ask you to turn around, God, in the name of Jesus. Nobody know this story but you. And nobody can work on the people like you can, God. Cause you is a solid God, and you do open things openly. And God, tonight, we ask you to work it out. God, according to your will. Lord, we ask you to touch, God. Even though we realize things are not happening like we think they should happen. But God, you will have the last saying. And you are able to do more than all of us can do together. And God, we ask you right now to just bind the hands of Satan on every side. God, we ask you to review his power right now. God, we ask you to touch their minds right now. God, we ask you to change, God, uh, in the name of Jesus. God, we need our workers, sir. Lord, when I go to the trash can, I want somebody to move my trash. Lord, when I look up around down the highway, God, I say bless them, Lord. In the name of Jesus. Lord, we need you, God, uh, to move in this city. God, even though those are not here tonight. Lord, some are complaining, uh, some are thanking you. But God, tonight, I ask you to just work it out, God. Lord, the money is there. Lord, the money is there, God. And we ask you to lucet, God, uh, in the name of Jesus. Lucet, God. Those that are holding to it, it's not theirs, God. You just let them hold it for a while. And I ask you to lucet now, in the name of Jesus. Bring about a change in this city. God, bring about a hearts and minds, God. Don't let hatred and bigotry come to cause of these situations. But Lord, let your love abide, God. And let us be concerned about one another. Cause we need each other when we realize we're not. God, the Lord says, if you don't work, you don't eat. But our workers want to work so they continue to eat, God. And pay their bills. We don't know nobody's house, and nobody's circumstances. We're looking on the outside, looking in. But you know the story, God. You know all about it tonight. And I ask you to bless. God, I ask you to move. God, look on those that are not here tonight. Lord, I don't know why, but God, you know why. And God, they ask for the positions. God, if they're not able to work the position, move them out of the way. And I'm not talking about killing anybody. But God, we ask you to just replace them with somebody that's concerned about the citizens. Of the Rocky Mountain area, and all the surrounding area, God. So it concerns your people, and God, we ask you to bless. Keep us in, keep us, God. Let us stay focused. Cause we can't really do nothing without you. We can talk all we want to. But God, you will have the last saying. Now I ask you now, God, to do move, work out the situation. God, that the city can come back to you. That your people can come back to you. And everything will fall into place. Because you is a loving God. And you are a merciful God. And you are forgiving God. And Lord, we thank in Jesus' name, and we thank you for this time.
I hate to be the person that follow a good word. In other words, I ain't gonna be long, I'm going to show you what I got to say. I'm Joshua Robinson, candidate for War Five, that seat right there. Reverend Walker, I married one of your, you know, you remember, uh, what's the, what's the name, uh, Irvin, you remember Irvin? Irvin Knight. I married his granddaughter. So we related by marriage. Ain't no poison over here. You said you needed four votes. Tomorrow, you got a chance to get five. Now, one thing that I definitely want to talk about tonight, because I tell you, I, I ain't about to follow a good word. I know grandma taught me better. I can't, can't, can't come up here, be long with this. I don't want to come after me, trying to get that. But, you know, it is what it is. I will say this. Pastor Silver, I was on the way here, and I had to shut the truck down early tonight. I was flipping a lot of burgers. I burned a lot of burgers, cause I'm so lame. Gotta give y'all a little cover in there. But I also said, it's time to stop flipping these burgers and go flip some tables. We have to truly advocate for all of our city. And I know y'all mentioned, y'all told about folk walking out. But I tell you, it's Halloween season, and now they just got their costumes out. That's all it is. They already got their costumes on. But the gentlemen that aren't here, I know y'all mentioned also about the mayor and his absence. But one thing that I do see in his, his campaign slogan, and his nice logo, as you know, he paid for a lot of marketing, is one Rocky Mountain. But tonight, it's looking like some of Rocky Mountain. To truly get one of Rocky Mountain, it shouldn't be four-three, shouldn't even be five-two. It should be unanimous to do right by all the citizens. Now, no matter if you afford the raise or not, you should have been in here. Just for respect. And that's it. I, I'm gonna be, I tell you, I'm gonna be long, cause I know it's a good word, you know. But I do appreciate this opportunity. I thank you for all our public servants being here, keeping us safe tonight. Cause who know, it could've been some crazy mad folk that was outside right now, mad that we in here trying to advocate. We do live in that world today, right? So we appreciate y'all on tonight. And, um, have a blessed night. Thank you. Josh Robinson, War Five, that's him.
My name is Maury Minjas. I have come a bunch of times to the city council meeting. This is the first time I've seen so many city council people not be here. Now, I am not a mind reader, and obviously, there are lots of mind readers in this room. This is not a city council meeting, which I thought it was. The mayor, or any of y'all, don't even have to be here, because it's not a city council meeting. I agree that if I were the mayor, I would've stayed here just to find out what the hay is going on. But, he is pretty, he's a man with lots of, I don't know occupations, but a lot of, uh, headings of, of, of lots of stuff. So, he thought he had somebody, something else to do.
Not on a regular city council meeting night.
But it's not a city council meeting.
It was supposed to be a city council meeting night.
But if you don't have a quorum, I'm not doing it. No, I've heard lots of people tell me what they think. But I don't know. I know lots of stuff. And I want to at least put this in before you, everybody don't stop to listen to. I wish I had, and I have in the cast, come here and had concerns, wish I had a brown paper bag. Because there are people here and in the city council, that if they didn't know what color my skin was, they would give me a little more respect. And don't tell me.
Wait a minute. No, sir. No, sir.
Wait a minute. I'm calling this to order.
Why?
Nobody here made a comment about anybody's skin color. Related to why people are respectful or not. Now, you came to speak, and you might have an opinion that nobody else agrees with, but you, that's fine. That's no problem. That's fine. That's fine. But don't come over here trying to straighten everybody out and telling people you're getting treated differently because you're white. You take, you take that parents' mess to the trash can. We talking garbage. Take that garbage out of here. Your privilege, your privilege has allowed you to come down to this building and disrespect for years.
That's right.
We have put up weapons.
That's right.
And you're right, we're not in a city council meeting.
That's right. A little heaven.
We not in a council meeting now. People have come down here, egged on by you and people like you.
That's right.
And have disrespected us to our faces. And they, oh yes, oh yes, ma'am, been here for years. People were coming down here saying we need to be put in cages. Folk came down here and said downtown is a asshole. People came down here and said the real downtown is at Sunset and Wednesday. And this whole movement, which is Donald Trump related.
Come on now, tell the story.
Because of Donald Trump taxes.
Tell the story.
We see, we've been very polite, Ms. Minjas. We've been very polite in the midst of rank disrespect. But this is no council meeting.
That's right.
This is the people's meeting, and we get to say what we want to say too. And what we're saying is that the majority of the city council did not tell anybody why they were canceling a meeting. The cancellation came from the city manager, to the city attorney, to the city clerk, who sent us an email. No conversations are taking place. So don't sit up here and talk about mind reading. It didn't have to have no minds read. We could've had a phone call. We could've had a conversation. We could have deliberated like grown people. But there is a movement taking place. And we will not be quiet. We will not be quiet.
Andre, don't blame me.
My husband, he start calling at me too. The main thing I want to know is.
And I'm not scared to holler, cause I'm not your husband.
But I just wanted, uh, I guess a month or so ago, when they started talking about sanitation workers, I think everybody ought to be paid so that they could have a good wage to keep their families together. I also know, I've also known that when I checked the email, I mean, internet, Kinston Sanat- uh, sanitation workers get twelve dollars and fifty cents an hour. Salisbury, I'm not through, Salisbury only gets fourteen thirty an hour. Winston-Salem, it's a heck of a lot bigger, I think, than Rocky Mountain, only gets fifteen dollars and thirty-two cents. Charlotte un- only gets sixteen something an hour. High Point, which is right down the road from my hometown, gets seventeen dollars and forty-seven cents. Now, I've always been brought up that the more education you have, the better job you have.
Okay, let her talk, till you can hear what she's saying. Let, let her talk. Let her talk, so you can hear what she's saying.
But I also know that teachers don't get very much either.
Well, the teacher need to fight for that wage.
They go to school for college for four years, and some of them come out with so much debt, they stay in debt the rest of their life. I also, five years ago or so, when the city council got a great big raise, and this is not your full-time job. So, you know, why did y'all take a salary increase and not say anything about sanitation or anybody else?
Cause we did say, don't be telling lies. Tell the truth.
Don't speak for them.
Tell the truth.
Did you take the raise?
They can speak for themselves.
Did you take the raise?
Yes, we did take the raise. You know why? Because we work for it.
Alright now.
Not every day.
Yes, ma'am. You don't live where I live. Yes, ma'am. I work for it every day.
But I also found out Ebony and Ivory is in your district.
It's correct.
So what?
You never brought that up.
No, because, I know why, because it's not an issue to me. I care about where people live in their homes, young ladies. I care about where people are living. Ebony and Ivory is a commercial property. It's just like tons of other commercial properties in Florida. Why don't you ask the mayor to talk to his friend, and TJ, and Jabar is to talk to their friend who owns it?
That's right.
And tell them to clean it up.
They did say that.
Then, they, then tell them to clean it up.
And the people that own it have said time and time again.
So, and I'm cleaning up, but it's not my priority.
And they will not be. They haven't done one stick of cleaning up.
And it will not be my priority. My priority is housing. My priority is economic development. My priority is equity and pay. And you got all the answers, that I don't sit up here and go back and forth with you about on Monday nights. And this about all you gonna get from me.
Alright now.
And none of y'all ever answered any questions.
Excuse me, Ms. Minjas, excuse me. I don't normally say much. But Wooton property is in my ward. And if Wooton Boat Factory is in my ward, no one have never said nothing about the. No one have never said nothing about the toxic slum dump that is on Cokie Road. But you gotta pass by to give it to the city. Now, you talk about litter, batteries, boats, dump, and everything else. And we have to pass by every single day to come into the city. I don't have to pass by every Ivory. I don't disagree that don't need to be cleaned up. But that dump was left in War Three. It may be invisible to everybody else, but it's not invisible to me and my citizens that I represent.
And when toxic waste, you heard Sledge Lock employees, you just heard somebody else say that they came over the honeywell. Sledge Lock is a super fun site, am I right?
That's right.
It was a super fun site. Which means that there was, that means that there was toxic waste. Ma'am, it's not about how pretty everything is.
Come on now.
It's about safety and health. Safety and health. So, that's why, that's why Ebony and Ivory is not my priority. It looks bad, I agree with you. It needs to be cleaned up. But there are no people around there with homes that have to deal with it every day. It's not producing toxic overflow that's making people sick and killing them. This is what we're here to talk about, is about lifting up people who deal with toxic issues and situations every day.
Well, how long this toxic waste place that everybody are guarding?
Ma'am, we're gonna get back on topic. Now, I'm gonna say, we can have another kind of conversation. We can have another kind of conversation. Our mayor can call a hearing on commercial properties that need to be dilapidated, taken down. That's, that's another time, you see what I'm saying? But tonight, our respect is related to the people who are working to keep our city clean. Now, do you support an increase? Do you support a fair wage?
Fair wage, for every, everybody.
For every.
That's who we talking about, everybody.
And I apologize if my passion overtook the mic, but yeah, I'm passionate about it.
Don't be apologetic. Don't blame me three, come on.
Okay, well, I also have some funny daydreaming coke ones. And I also have some viewpoints that might not, love you, I not agree with. But, the way, the way I see it, and, um, just like, what's her name? Sidney Meeks said that this is all political, and, and I agree, and that's really where I'm coming from, is that I've lived here seven years, and I know there has been talks about sanitation worker raises over the years, but I've never seen a fight this hard for it, except for right now, this year, since about maybe March is when it started. And it just struck me as coincidental, maybe not so that this is an election year. And that, you know, Andre Knight is running for reelection, and he's pushing so hard. And so, to me, it struck me as, why not this hard last year? Why not this hard the year before? So that's, that's my opinion of it, that's where I'm coming from. That's, yeah, that's what I see. And so, we've had some, and the way I see a lot of comments come up, yes, there's both sides of it, it's all political. So, the, they're saying, in the, in the, in the ordinances, in the ordinances that yes, you can compel someone to come to a meeting, and they can be arrested or whatever, and, but the same thing happened back in May twenty twenty, when the auditors report came out. There was a lot of meetings called, a couple meetings called before threatening not to go. And so, it's just whatever side you're on, if it suits you or if it's inconvenient, whether or not you wanna follow that or not.
No, 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 correct the record, that's just what you said, but that ain't the record. We face the auditors' comments, which we addressed with fact.
And we're not talking about the meetings that, I'm just talking about the meeting that was called and had, you see I draw.
There was one meeting that the mayor attempted to call.
Yes.
To ask Andre Knight and Ruben Blackwell to resign.
I know it's about you resigning, we were trying, but okay. So, but my, my point was about showing up for the meeting and then.
But the issue is that we face the people.
Okay, all right. Fair enough. Now, to that point, I also see where, okay, well, if people don't show up, then what is your priorities? And I think it was you that said earlier in this week that all the meetings are listed, the schedule's printed out. And a couple weeks ago, it was, uh, the two of you didn't show up to a meeting, I say that's cause you're scared. You said you weren't, you said you weren't, okay, okay.
And the meeting went on, and that's my.
And it went on, and it went on, it was about duty as an elected representative to show up and sort of fit people on. I felt like it was a conflict of interest to not show up and choose OIC instead of what you're elected to represent. So I think there's two sides of all of this that can be shown here.
He called in.
And clearly, these things, clearly, maybe it doesn't matter to you. It, it matters, these things matter to me, that's okay, but it doesn't matter to you, it matters to me.
Getting everybody on topic.
We're talking about these, we're talking about these, these pay raises, and, and sort of like, this is just brought up with, with the, what I see is, yes, years ago, there was a two hundred and thirty-seven percent increase in the, in the council's salary, and that was not, that was secured your own line during pockets before you pushed for the sanitation workers. That's, that's the viewpoint that, and that's the viewpoint that I see. If we're here to talk about what the people are seeing and what our viewpoints are, that's my viewpoint. That's what I, that's my perspective, that's what I'm seeing. And that's fair, and I'm glad to have the opportunity to speak, I'm, I'm really grateful for that. So, one more time, okay, we're good, we're talking about sanitation workers, fifteen percent raise, six percent cost of living, when they're already among the highest paid.
That ain't got nothing to do with it.
So what's the number?
That ain't got nothing to do with it. That ain't got nothing to do with it.
Fair wage, okay, then we need to find what's fair, because.
You don't get to choose.
We were talking about a living wage is fifteen dollars an hour, well now, there been, the lowest one is nineteen forty-seven.
Run for council.
Is twenty-nine dollars an hour.
Run for council.
With benefits.
Run for council.
Okay, all right, that doesn't matter, okay.
Run for council.
This is, and then what I see ahead is, if you keep pushing and keep pushing, and you're right, you can. Fight for what you want. But, and good, and good. But, what's the consequences if you keep pushing? Because there's economic, there's economic implications at work here, okay? When we had this nationwide push years ago for a fifteen dollar an hour wage, and several states adopted it, like New York State, well, what happened? You have corporations like McDonald's that said, okay, fine, we're gonna eliminate jobs. And then all of those workers who were, who were at the cashier just now, it's self-checkout kiosks in there. So then, so how many people will lose jobs if you push too far? And I'm not saying it's right, I'm saying that's the economic reality, what's going on.
Right.
It's not, it's not right, but that, if, if, if an, if a company can do it cheaper, we can outsource it.
You might can, they might, they can.
But while you just think, that's fine, that's where I'm coming from, that's what I'm saying, that could be unintended consequences to pushing so hard. It really is. There was, thank you, there was some, Tim Barnes outside was trying to confront me, saying that I, you know, wouldn't take a job doing trash, and I appreciate the work, and would it, I mean, would it matter if I told you that I don't even get paid to pick up trash, and pick up trash in my own neighborhood for two solid years? Once I get, picks up trash, two, giant bags work. And how many soil they dealt out, and picks up, it's not that I don't have empathy, but how rough this job is.
Go talk to Tim Barnes then. No, sit her down.
I appreciate the opportunity.
Wow.
I don't know, this is, uh.
Don't blame me three.
I wasn't up, uh, believing, but, um, since we're coping, single me out.
She got some nerve to come up in this life.
Last time I told her, her privilege ended here. And I just want to say, I fought ever since I've been here and before I got here. That's all I can do. We have fought every issue. From sanitation, to police, fire, diversity, and all the work places here in the departments. We fought environmental injustice, we demolished the Tip Top Bakery, the Mayola Milk Company, the Planters Oil Mill that was contaminated. And most of these commercial buildings in African-American communities were left with contamination. It was our goal to clean those up and to bring economic development. It was this council, when this city only had sixty thousand dollars in the budget to do demolition. And in one vote, we increased that with the majority of two hundred thousand dollars, that we can tear down these dilapidated homes. It was this council that saw that ours downtown was dying and dormant. And we do intentional about developing our city from the core, our downtown, which we have an event center that is thriving. It was your narrative and others who want to create an illusion that is not safe.
You're the one not paying your.
Excuse me. Excuse me. Excuse me. I told her that the last time, I told her, the last time I told you. Excuse me, yeah, the last time I told you, and I'm gonna say it again.
Still being disrespectful. Come on now.
And let me finish, won't you talk about the auditor? Talk about that. Talk about Gary Weeks that stole hundreds of thousands of dollars from this city. Talk about when we, excuse me, you've been very disrespectful. I didn't say anything when you were talking, that's the privilege I'm talking about.
Right, right.
Excuse me, excuse me, excuse me, I'm speaking, excuse me.
You got some nerve to come up in here.
Let's talk about the high utility bills that we had, excuse me. Excuse me, your privilege has ended. Excuse me, hey, audience, see the privilege, you see Karen? You're, talk about the history of when we went to Nakemba, and this city, along with Kess Newbin, threatened to sue Duke if we didn't get lower utility bills. Let's talk about the false propaganda that you want to destroy a strong black man who's been fighting. And again, it's a lie that a black man walk around in this city for twenty years and don't pay no utility bill. Excuse, your privilege has ended. And since you got me on your chest, I hope you sleep with it. God bless you. And it's how I asked, uh, for, uh, uh, for, uh, to, uh, read the, uh, and then we were, hopefully, thank you.
So, um, as I stated earlier, well, Mr. Joyner, uh, Councilman Joyner sent a series of questions that he stated verbally in this city council meeting. And we received a reply on Friday.